All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We still have a few council members who haven't made it to the chamber yet, but we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting called to order so we can start off. We're gonna start off with an invocation from Councilman Corbin, followed by the pledge allegiance from Councilman Bradford.
Father, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We ask for you to watch over our city, our citizens. Thank you for keeping everyone safe with the recent bad weather, being with those who are still dealing with it in other parts of our country. We ask that you look out for all of those who work for our citizens, our first responders, our employees of the city who are out every day and dealing with things. Help us to make good decisions and keep calm heads. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please put your hand where I can place your flag, and let's say you pledge any unison. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Bradford.
President.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Here.
Ms. Lynch. Mr. Bowman.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Back it up.
All right, and one sec for my technology to come up. Okay. I've got a motion from Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Flurry, to approve the minutes of the administrative conference hearing of May 11th and the city council meeting on Tuesday, May 12th. And all votes are in, and motion passes unanimously. Now we are at the words recognition of distinguished guests and communications of the mayor. We'll start with council, and I would like to start by acknowledging that you'll see Councilman Bowman is not here today, and hopefully he will be joining us, but we want to remember him and his family, as today is the second anniversary of the passing of his mother, Joyce Bowman, who was, you know, such a dynamic leader for the city of Shreveport and Caddo Parish, so we want to keep him and his family in our prayers today as they remember Joyce's passing. Also wanted to start out by thanking the first responders and the employees of the city, as Councilman Corbin mentioned in the invocation. You know, in recent days, we've had, and really all year, we've had some severe weather, and it's really been a tremendous showing on the part of our first responders to come and make sure that our citizens feel safe, that our systems continue to function, and that people are able to continue to operate in what is a challenging time. So, we thank them for all of their extra efforts in being available on call and on duty when we need them the most. And then I do have a couple of presentations that I'd like to acknowledge, some people, some visitors here to provide a presentation to the council today, but before doing that, are there any other council members that have anything they'd like to communicate at this time? All right, see, and none. You'll have another opportunity after the presentations, but I'd like to first invite the NLEP, the North Louisiana Economic Partnership, has got a presentation for us today. And following their presentation will be a presentation from the Human Relations Commission, who were impaneled last year, and they're here to give us an update on some of their work, and so we look forward to both of these presentations.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Everson, and thank you, Mayor Tyler. Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us to present to you this afternoon. I'm Scott Martinez, I'm president of the North Louisiana Economic Partnership. I've been in this position a little, just about two and a half years at this point, and I've been impressed by the way I've been embraced by the city of Shreveport and North Louisiana. In fact, I'm purchasing a home in the city of Shreveport in Councilmember Corbin's district, and putting down some roots here. But the city of Shreveport has been a longtime supporter of the North Louisiana Economic Partnership, and I want to take this as an opportunity to update you on our activities as they relate to the city of Shreveport. Before you, you'll see our quarterly investor report. Every investor of the North Louisiana Economic Partnership gets this every quarter, regardless of what level they give. It has our financials included in it, as well as our prospect activity and the activities of our organization, because when I got here, I wanted to make sure that we built an organization that was transparent and accountable to the stakeholders that we serve. Also, I want to take this opportunity to share with you a document as it relates to the city of Shreveport and the activities that we've undertaken specific to the city of Shreveport. Just in the past, from January of 2014 through today, we've submitted, we've worked on 40 projects that were in the city of Shreveport. We've submitted 91 different sites, and that has a value, if they all came to fruition, of over $3.9 billion. The wins, or the activities, the projects we've been engaged with that have located in our community, they total 2,657 jobs and over a billion dollars in capital investment, with the largest being that of Bentley Steel Tube at the port. I think it's important that you see your return on investment in our organization. I know councilmembers Flurry and Bradford, they saw a more in-depth presentation recently at the North Shreveport Business Association, but our organization undertook a strategic plan that was launched back in July that we really implemented this year, and we engaged tip strategies from Austin, Texas, to come in and look at our organization, the region we serve, and how we could best be effective in economic development. They came back with three pillars, if you will, that we concentrate on as an organization. The first is economic development, making sure we go out and market our region in an effective manner, also work with existing companies that are here to make sure we're meeting their needs, if they have any issues, whether it's regulatory or just information, we want to be there and be that resource. The second is workforce and talent development. We recently did a workforce summit here in Shreveport where we looked at everything from the Jump Start Program. We had Secretary Superintendent White come address the group at lunch, and that was well received. And then the third area that we haven't been engaged in historically is advocacy. We just created a PAC, the Top of Louisiana PAC, and we're gonna be much more engaged in the political process in Baton Rouge and Washington DC. With a region as large as we have in North Louisiana that we serve, it represents a pretty sizable legislative delegation, and if we can get them to jail and be a unified voice from an economic development perspective, I think we can be much more effective in garnering resources and having a more unified voice as it relates to North Louisiana activities. We've got a staff at Shreveport that'll eventually be five. We've got two openings currently in business development. One of those positions, we focus solely on Caddo Parish projects. That's a new partnership that we've just consummated with the Parish of Caddo. We'll be doing that shortly. We also have another business development position that will be based here in Shreveport. Secondarily, we'll have a position in Monroe, Louisiana, that'll be focused on CenturyLink, IBM, and working with our universities in the technology sector. So, that's what we do. We have a strong research program. We have an attorney on staff that's over our research program and handles any legal issues that may come up, whether it relates to real estate or other matters, and I feel like our staff now is stronger than it's ever been, top to bottom. So, that's who we are, what we do, but most importantly, thank you for the support you've given us historically.
Great, well, we certainly appreciate the update. I know we have a number of new council members, so it's always beneficial to keep those lines of communication open, and even those of us who've been around for a minute, it's good to keep the communications current and make sure that everybody knows how to get ahold of y'all and understands the partnership and the roles that y'all are playing. So, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to hear from you today. Does anybody have any direct questions for Scott?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will express my appreciation to Mr. Martinez. I think we've had a chance to visit three times, you know, with the annual meeting. Joe Thiesman came and gave a wonderful talk on business progress and advocacy, as well as, I guess it was last month, it was at the North Shreveport Business Association meeting where you gave a very PowerPoint detailed review of your activities, and I think I asked you more questions there than anybody else, so I think I got all my curiosities answered, but nevertheless, you know, your work is very well documented, and we appreciate what you do, and I hope, as you move forward, that, and I didn't address this with you, as it relates to the diversity in which you try to seek and recruit business opportunities. I'm working very strongly for more diversity, African-American businesses in this region, as it may reflect the diversity of this region. So, I appreciate what you're doing, and I just ask that you look more strongly in that direction.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that input.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your ongoing efforts, and really appreciate y'all coming down and taking the time to give us an update, and it is always nice to have quarterly reports.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next, I believe we have, the Human Relations Commission is here. If we could, we appreciate them coming. I know there were several new council members who may not have had an opportunity to hear from them yet, and again, we mentioned they are recently impaneled, so it's great to get an update. Hey, Adrian.
Hi. I am Adrian Critcher, 817 Ontario Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm a member of the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission, and I'm here today to kind of give you a status report. So, Floyd Mayor, Tyler, Chairman Everson, and members of the council. I have some information here that I'll pass out. I'm sending around a list of the members of the commission and our agenda for our first meeting that's gonna be on Thursday. Let me just back up for a second, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but I know since we have some new members on the commission, just to sort of bring you up to speed with where we are, back in December of 2013, the Shreveport City Council passed what we call the Shreveport Fairness Ordinance. It's a city non-discrimination ordinance that protected people on the basis of race, color, sex, disability, age, ancestry, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, and political or religious affiliations. This is a city ordinance that protects people in employment, housing, and public accommodations. Most of these categories are protected by state and federal law, the LGBT community, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender. They do not have any state or federal protections, and so New Orleans and Shreveport are the only cities in Louisiana that, because of this ordinance, do extend protections to those categories. Shreveport joined over 300 other cities across the country in offering these protections. The enforcement mechanism for the Shreveport Fairness Ordinance is the Human Relations Commission, and this was created in June of 2014. An ordinance created this commission, and then in December of 2014, Mayor Glover appointed nine members to that commission, and I'm one of those members. So, let me tell you what we've been doing. As you can, as you look over the list of people on the commission, it's a diverse group. These are all people who have shown interest and have experience in human relations concerns for our city. They all support the human relations ordinances that are now part of our code of ordinances. It's important to remember, they are all volunteers. We'll be holding our first meeting in two days, on Thursday, at 3:30 in the afternoon, and I've given you a copy of our agenda. We'll be electing a chair and a vice chair. We'll be discussing and adopting rules and forms for the commission to operate under, and then we'll also be forming a subcommittee to plan some workshops on race. And Dr. Sherri Kerr had hoped to be here today to talk to you a little bit about that, but she is working on another project. She's out of town, and I don't know, Prentice, yeah, Prentice is here. Prentice Smith is another member of our commission, and he's just gonna say a brief word about that in just a minute. He and Sherri are gonna be on a subcommittee to work on that. But let me tell you what we've been doing over the months since the HRC members were appointed back, right at Christmas. I have been working with Assistant City Attorney Julie Glass, as she has developed forms and policies and procedures for handling grievances that would be submitted to the Human Relations Commission. Ms. Glass received information from the Executive Director Larry Bagneras of the New Orleans Commission. They've been in operation for 25 years, so they have a lot of experience. So, they sent us a lot of materials. Their commission is different. It's more extensive than ours. They actually work with the EEOC. We have more modest goals. We are all volunteers. They have a paid staff. But she did a great job in reworking, a major, major reworking of their documents to come up with rules that are appropriate for our commission. In addition, Frank Thaxton, a retired judge, a mediation attorney, who's also a member of the commission, he also advised Ms. Glass, and they worked together on coming up with these policies and procedures. Now, our policies and procedures state that whenever a grievance is filed, the first thing that we will do is try to mediate that grievance, and the New Orleans Commission has found that 99% of their grievances are handled through mediation, and so we expect to have the same experience here. Frank Thaxton, because he is a mediation attorney, has offered to be on every panel initially that handles mediation. He will be on a panel, he'll have a couple of other people on that panel with him, and so that way, various members of the commission, by working with Mr. Thaxton, can get a lot of experience in learning how to do mediation. It's very generous of Mr. Thaxton to offer to do that, so we're very excited about that. If mediation fails, then we also have rules for how a grievance will be heard and ruled on. In addition, Ms. Glass has developed forms, for example, when someone files a grievance, we will give them a sheet that explains to them what the limitations of our human rights, excuse me, Human Relations Commission is. No one gets their job back. There is, there are no monetary damages given to a plaintiff. The Human Relations Commission can levy fines of $500 for a first offense, $1,000 for subsequent offenses, but there are limits to what we can do. So, we want to be sure that people are aware of that. We're also going to provide them a list of other agencies and boards that they may feel that would better serve their needs, so EEOC and things like that. So, we want to let them know what their options are. The New Orleans Commission found that most of their grievances come from, come based on discrimination, based on race, which is a little surprising. We thought it might mostly come from the LGBT community, because they have no other protections, but it turns out that oftentimes, even though if there's a racial discrimination issue, there are state and federal laws that people can go to court over, sometimes people want to take the simpler task of coming before a commission where we can help them with mediation, and we can give them a voice, we can let them be heard, and sometimes that's all people want. And so, we expect our experience to be similar, but we'll see. So, we have an intake form that's been designed for people to file a grievance, findings forms, scripts for hearings, so Ms. Glass has been working very hard in trying to come up with everything so that we are gonna soon be ready to start hearing grievances. I've had a very good meeting with Mayor Tyler, and Brian Crawford, and William Bradford. They've all been very helpful in facilitating the work of the commission to help us get started. Now, another important role of our commission will be to educate. That's part of the ordinance. And back in February, Centenary College held a forum on racial diversity and justice, and two of our HRC members were panelists at that forum, and then three others attended the forum. And at that forum, we made contact with a retired centenary professor out in Hancock, who now lives in the Asheville, North Carolina area. He sent us information about a building bridges series of workshops that they held in that area that he said were very, very effective, and so we are going to form at our first meeting, we're gonna form a subcommittee to talk about that. And so, our HRC member, Prentice Smith, is here today. He's gonna, come on up, and he's just gonna very briefly, he has a lot of interest in this, he was one of the people at the, at that forum, and so he's just gonna talk to you very, very briefly about some of the things that we're gonna try to do there. And then I'll be here if you have any questions from him.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Tyler, and the city council. This was, just briefly, this commission that Ms. Pendry is talking about, we all, we believe that this is something that will enhance relationships throughout the community, and we primarily want to make sure that, you know, we have a racial component to this commission. As she said, down in New Orleans, that was, most of the complaints were racial. But we also, we want to deal with the LGBT community, because at the end of the day, and I think that this is something that all of us, whether we, you know, just openly or admit it, or whatever, we want to have better relationships among our citizens. And so, we're going to have a series of workshops, discussions, because at the beginning, we have to have honesty. We have to have honesty about what's going on, about the problems that we see in our communities, and we also have to be willing to talk to each other and to listen to each other. And so, you know, we don't want this to be an antagonistic relationship. We want this to be a relationship that is one that we have mutual agreements on, and we have a mutual component to it, where we're all trying to make Shreveport a better city, and that's what this is all about. And, you know, this was kind of a short notice for me, and I really just wanted to say to the council that Ms. Pendry and the rest of the group, we volunteered for this, because, you know, we, I'm not a native Shreveporter, but Shreveport's my home now. I've been here for 35 years, and raised a family here, and it's a wonderful city, but it can be, it can be better, and we can improve it, and I think it starts with relationships among our people and our citizens. And basically, that's what I wanted to say to the council, but thank you for having us. Thank you for having me.
Any questions?
Any questions from anybody?
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you. Critcher, how are you?
I'm just fine. Pendry is my maiden name, and so.
That's fine. Listen, I asked the mayor to, I request of the mayor whether that you come, because I was in the meeting last year when the names of the, of the, what was announced, and I hadn't, I hadn't seen you guys since.
Yes, right.
I was proud that the commission was reinstated, you know. I was a member of the first commission back in 1992, and then Mayor Hazel Beard and the council, as an ordinance, actually, to get that started, and we worked for over 10 years, and then it was dissolved, or whatever. I was off the board when it did that, but I was glad to see it reinstated, and I was glad that you guys took on a different, a different role. And I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions regarding that role you took on. And again, I mean, Shreveport has a, has a mission and an objective of making sure that we are diverse and we're tolerant, we, you know, we're open for everybody, and I think that's pretty much your primary objective. But then this grievance and component that was put in, that you would hear grievances. So, I wanted to ask you, what constitutes a grievance?
Well, let's say that someone applies for a job, and because they are black, or perhaps, maybe they're gay, they are told that they're not being hired for that reason.
Okay.
So, someone could file a grievance and file a grievance with our commission. Perhaps someone tries to rent an apartment. Maybe, maybe we have an interracial couple, and someone, they want to rent an apartment, and the landlord says, you know, I don't approve of interracial marriage, and so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna rent an apartment to you. Or, you're gay, I don't approve of gay people, I'm not gonna rent an apartment to you. These things happen, and so someone could file a grievance. We do have exemptions for housing units, owner-occupied housing units of less than five units, small businesses of fewer than eight employees. All religious nonprofit organizations are exempt, so we do have some standard, pretty generous exemptions, but are maybe someone, this happened to a couple in Baton Rouge, a gay couple went into a home improvement store and wanted to buy granite countertops, and the salesperson, when they realized they were a gay couple, would not sell them granite countertops. So, somebody could file a grievance if they wanted to do it.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make your meeting, it's gonna be limited, what I'm asking, I'm asking you two more questions.
Okay.
And I want to go further into this categorizing the grievance in the sense that who was a distinguished, if it's fictitious enough, if it's an actual, if it's an actual, actual legitimate case.
Well, we'll have a hearing. We would have a hearing. First of all, we would try to mediate the grievance, and so first of all, our panel, we put a panel together, and they would go talk to both parties and try to mediate without levying any fine. A lot of times, when it's brought to people's attention, that they have done something that's discriminatory, a lot of times, it's out of ignorance, and when you bring that to their attention, they're sorry, and they, you know, we won't do that again, and we would be happy with that. If we can't mediate something, then they would, we would have a hearing, and both sides would come and present their case, and it would be up to the person filing the grievance to basically prove that discrimination had taken place, and then the panel, we would have an initial panel, a five-member panel, that would hear that initial grievance. If the outcome is not to either party's satisfaction, they can appeal to a full nine, the full nine-member panel.
So, if a fine is levied, who gets the money?
The city.
The city gets it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I'm gonna try to make the meeting, because I have some additional questions, but I don't, and not relevant to this conversation.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation, and I have to say thank you to Julie and to all of the members of the committee, to the mayor and Brian, for staying focused on this goal. I know this is a new role, a new task, a new group, and sometimes it can be difficult to establish all the ways of how a group will function within, within the confines of the city, but this has been moving along at a good pace, and it sounds like y'all have done a great deal of work, and I just want to express continued appreciation for that. I think there is a lot of opportunity for a commission like this to help, you know, better relations between different populations in our city, and that's always a good thing. It will help us focus on being Shreveporters, and what makes us similar is we're all from Shreveport, or we're all living in Shreveport or doing business in Shreveport, instead of what may make us different. So, thank you so much.
And we find that, we find that businesses, you know, we're part of a global community now, and a city that welcomes everyone is important to international corporations. I think we saw Indiana found that out, and hopefully Louisiana won't have to find that out the hard way, but this is, and it's important to have a community that welcomes everyone, and we feel like that's a good way to do it.
And that's what I was gonna ask you. Was you guys observing House Bill 707?
Yes, yes, we were. Our commission hasn't taken a position about that, but I'm members of other groups that have been concerned about that. And in fact, if anyone's interested, I do, I'm also a member of another organization, PACE, an LGBT advocacy group, and I have prepared a document that I can send to anybody who's interested, that explains how House Bill 707 is different from the federal RFRA's, those Religious Restoration and Freedom Acts, how it is different, how it's actually worse than the one in Indiana and the one in Arkansas. So, I have information on that if anybody is interested. One thing that, we were very happy that the committee voted, voted to table it 10 to 2. Of course, Mike Johnson, who sponsored the bill, was on the committee. He didn't vote to have it tabled. Then the governor, as you know, came along and issued an executive order. I got to hear the testimony, I was out of town, but got to hear a live stream. Stephen Perry of the New Orleans Convention Investor Bureau gave very powerful testimony that if this bill were passed, it would cost the state of Louisiana hundreds of millions of dollars, thousands of jobs. I didn't realize it, but the New Orleans Convention Investors Bureau has offices around the world. They, they have billions of dollars that come into the state, and they have offices in New York, and Chicago, London, and Paris. I didn't realize that. So, they were very concerned about this bill. They did some research and said they don't think the executive order will have an impact, political grandstanding mostly. We hope, we hope the rest of the world gets that message.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that presentation today, and... We appreciate that presentation today. And unless there are any other comments at this point, we will move to Mayor Tyler. I know she has some communications and presentations today, and we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. We want to first say thank you also to our emergency crews, who were up most of the night, working to ensure the safety of our citizens during the storm that hit Shreveport yesterday. We appreciate your dedication and commitment to attending to the needs of our city. And I want to say specifically, I want to thank CAO Crawford, Public Works Director, and all of the people who work with, with them, Water and Sewer Department, Ms. Featherston, and all of those people who work with her, Police Department, Chief Shaw, and all of his staff members, Fire Department, Chief Wolverton, and all of the people who worked around the clock last night to make sure that we were safe and make sure that we could remove the debris, make sure we could try to keep our sewer systems running. So just, I want people to know that they worked all night long, and we were texting and calling throughout the night. So thank you so much for all that you do for the citizens of Shreveport. And today, we have in the audience, members of the City of Shreveport's Eighth Leadership Academy. This program, through our Human Resources Department, allows city employees to gain leadership skills to prepare them for the next level in their careers, and I want to ask them to just stand and be recognized today. Will you please stand, Leadership Academy Eighth, class? And let's. Thank you so much, and I want to thank Ms. Angelita Jackson for her leadership in that effort. I'm proud to announce that the City of Shreveport and Shreveport Common received a top award in the nation for outstanding community development from the National Development Council. Our initiative was selected out of 56 projects and six finalists, which included cities much larger than Shreveport. Bunny Moore and Valerie Irvin of Community Development, Pam Atchison of the Shreveport Regional Arts Council, and Wendy Ben Scotter of Shreveport Common led the presentation that put us over the top at the conference in Washington, D.C. I want to thank them for their work in making Shreveport number one in this area. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Atchison and anybody she wants to come up and just give you just two or three minutes of what happened and how we were able to win that number one award in the nation.
Absolutely.
Let's give them a hand after.
Bonnie, come on. Bonnie, come on.
Well, what a joy, what a joy to honor the village. Some of the village members are right here in the room that had an opportunity to represent Shreveport Common recently in Washington. I just want to, you know, thank you, Mayor Tyler. You've already said really almost everything, but no one's wearing the beads, so if you don't mind, Esther Kennedy, our project administrator, is gonna bring you the beads that we think got everyone's attention for Shreveport Common and allowed us to pave the way. As you, as Mayor Tyler has already said, our, our team is chaired by Shelley Regal right here. Shelley from SPAR is the chairperson for the Shreveport Common Board. Of course, right on the board is Jeff Everson, who represents the council and has never missed a meeting, so I'm hoping that you all know everything there is to know, and we're so grateful. Going with us and representing the whole idea that this was a community development award, so not an arts award, not an award for creativity, an award for all of the things that go into the gumbo that makes a great community. So housing was a big part of it, and Bonnie and Valerie were both there, and Candace Higginbotham also serves on our committee. And I want to also just make sure that you all know that the brains of Shreveport Common, the planning guru, is Wendy Ben Scotter, who is the project director for this nine-block cultural niche that we call an uncommon cultural community that connects our downtown with our hub choice neighborhoods. And that, so really, I believe that it was the very first week, Mayor, that you had been elected, that you came across this opportunity to put Shreveport in the national limelight by encouraging us to apply for the award. It was a very rigorous application, and lots and lots of words, and we came out in the top six out of the 56 applicants for the award. The top six meant we had to go to Washington and try to attract the attention of 500 delegates who were there to vote for their favorite projects. As Mayor Tyler said, there were some bigger cities, Los Angeles, Seattle, Chicago, there were even some bigger art projects, which was really rather remarkable to those of us who were able to go. But between the beads and the great brochure and the opportunity for a quick sound bite with 500 individual delegates, we moved from top six in the nation to top three in the nation, and we were eligible now to present our Shreveport Common vision to all of the delegates who were there. And if I may say, I think that Shreveport not only won the top award, which Shelley has this beautiful trophy, and no, there was no money with it. Where are you, Shelley, with the trophy? There you go. I know you're gonna give that to Mayor Tyler. But moreover, I think truly that we won the hearts and minds of professional developers who were there, of other housing leaders who were there, of retail and housing market value developers who were there, of transportation people who were there, and it was a great opportunity to share the good work that this city has done. And there are so many people in the room, it would just take me one second to say, the award really is that recognition that arts can work side by side. There are more than 1,100 artists who make this area their home, and they're working side by side transportation. So I noticed that Alan is in the room, and Jean from Sportran have been a big part of it. They're working side by side housing. I've already told you about Bonnie and Valerie and Candace. We're working side by side our green spaces with our parks people, with the Parish of Caddo as well. And then property acquisition. Malcolm Statlander, I know you're in the room. Stand up, Malcolm, please. I thought I saw him right there. Thank you so much for all the property acquisition that you've been working on. Robert Westerman from Engineering, where are you, Robert? You've made bridges happen for us. And I, I hope that I haven't left anyone out. Golly, I'll be so embarrassed when I find out that I did. But I do want you to know that this award really is an award for the City of Shreveport from Mayor Tyler's great recommendation to apply and her encouraging support letter that went with this. And I think it's a great win for all of us and a reflection on what it means to think about a community holistically. So on June the 4th, we're gonna have a big party right on the beautiful, brand-new Elvis Presley Avenue as part of the grand promenade on the Elvis Presley Avenue, and we're going to have it from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Mayor Tyler's gonna present the award to the entire community at that time, and we hope everyone will come out and realize the great strides that have been made. And of course, the renovation of the municipal auditorium and Elvis Presley Boulevard are at the helm of those big changes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right. And we want to pass this around, and because everybody on the council has to share in this, thank you so much to those people who went to Washington to represent us so well. When I saw the application online, we were constantly looking for, for ways to, to tell the world about Shreveport. I knew if we could get Pam and some of the people, Shelley and all of those folk in front of a panel.
Absolutely.
Nationally, we could win the award. So thank you all so much for taking us up on that. I'm excited also to announce that the City of Shreveport has won the honor of State Municipality of the Year for the second consecutive year for the use of compressed natural gas to fuel the city's municipal refuse and transit fleets. Sportran's general manager, DeNero Washington, received that award on the city's behalf. We're so proud to see the City of Shreveport's efforts in becoming a green-friendly city, and we are being recognized statewide for those efforts. Mr. Washington, will you please stand wherever you are? Thank you so much for kicking up that board for us. And we'll pass that around. Thank you so much. As you can see, Shreveport is on the move. We're getting the message out continuously on our literal abatement.
I've seen them have to trade trophies. I like them, I like there being a trophy traffic jam.
Yes, yes, yes. Isn't it wonderful? One statewide and one national.
There you go.
Our literal abatement and beautification initiative is ongoing, and I want to thank two more of our community partners publicly, KTBS and Lamar, for their support. KTBS has been running a public service announcement for us this past few weeks, and Lamar has billboards going up all around town with our logo. Keep it classy, don't be trashy, keep it classy, Shreveport is home. We need everyone on board to clean up our city, and we are on our way to making that happen, and we will constantly push that message. Now, at this time, we want to bring up Mrs. Barbara Featherston, and she's gonna come up and give us a brief update on our consent decree activities and efforts, and then she'll allow you to answer questions. To ask questions, Rob. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Couple weeks ago, we passed our first one-year milestone on the consent decree. As you know, the consent decree has a number of milestones and a number of different things we have to meet at different times. Just wanted to give you a brief update on what we've completed, where we are on our schedule, and what we have coming up in the near future. Basically, our first milestone at the one-year anniversary was completion of the field work in the first phase, which is basically what we call our Cedar Grove Basin. That is one of our largest sewage basins, has about a million feet of sewer main in that basin, about 2,500 manholes. We completed that work by the deadline. We're required to submit a report on that field data in two months from the deadline in July, and then our plan to fix all of that two months later. We did submit a draft report to EPA of that data collection effort so that they could see it, ask questions, make sure that when we do the final submittal, that they were pleased with that submittal. We are also anticipating submitting the actual remedial measures plan ahead of schedule as well. At the one-year deadline, we're also tasked with submitting what we call the collection system operations and preventative maintenance program, basically how we operate our system. And it's a set of standard operating procedures that has been completely revamped from what we had previously, and that was also submitted prior to the deadline of May 1st. We submitted that in, in April. The other deadline at 12 months was our collection system hydraulic model, where we look at our system and what it's doing hydraulically, and that was completed and submitted to EPA in April as well. Some of the other milestones that we have coming up very quickly are the, are the annual report to EPA. Even though it's the one-year deadline, they do give us a couple of months to, to put all that data together, and so we will have that submitted by the deadline. We're very excited that we're staying on schedule, and even a little bit ahead of schedule, it's been somewhat challenging. Our remedial measures plan, which is basically our plan to fix everything in that first phase, that plan is due in a couple, in three months, four months. With a completion of all the construction for that phase has to be complete in November of 2017. We have worked with EPA to kind of start some of that work ahead of time. We've already identified the projects, selected the engineers, and the engineers are currently out in the Cedar Grove Basin doing survey work, and will soon begin design on some of those projects. So you will start to see those construction projects start rolling out mid to late summer. So we're very excited about that. There's about 80 projects, anywhere from a half million dollars to $5 million out in the basin. Right now, there's a preliminary cost estimate of $120 million, but that's before any actual design work, real design work, has been done. So we're anticipating that will go down a little bit, you know? They go from really conservative down to less conservative with those cost estimates. You know, meeting that compliance schedule is, is the most important thing for every one of these milestones. Phase two of the field investigation report is that that work was supposed to begin at the end of the phase one work. We started that field investigation work last fall. We anticipate being complete sometime first quarter in next year to put us six to eight to 10 months ahead of schedule for that field work. That gives us that much more time to complete what takes the most money and the most time, which is construction. And so, we're trying to make sure that we maintain those schedules going forward. Another big portion of this is not just, we had to do a hydraulic model of what our system is doing right now with the holes. What we do with that model is then they say, okay, if you fix these holes and all that water is flowing through the system, what size should your pipes be so that you don't have any overflows? The whole go is zero overflows. That's called a capacity assessment. That is something that EPA has in our consent decree to be started at month 16 and to be complete by month 22. We have basically completed that work for the collection system, not for the treatment plants, but for the collection system, so that any pipe size changes that are necessary to convey that water can be incorporated into the fix-it work. So we're not fixing something and then coming back in and replacing those pipelines. So we're significantly ahead of schedule. We will submit that report, or would be ready to submit that report, before we are even required to start it. So we're, again, very excited about that. One of the things that, that we are gonna want to talk about with the, probably the infrastructure committee first, is something that I've brought up last year and the year before, and that is concerning sewer service laterals. As, as most of you are aware, the homeowner is required to fix everything from their house to the city sewer main, irregardless of where that main is located. On the other side of the street, in the middle of Burt Coons, in the middle of Yuri Drive. Our consent decree requires that the city adhere to its ordinances. And our ordinances state that if a defect is found in a sewer service lateral, the homeowner is required to fix it in 10 days or is supposed to cut their water off. We anticipate that that's going to be a huge burden on our citizens. We've been reviewing different municipalities around the state and where they draw that cutoff line as to what is the responsibility of the city and the responsibility of that homeowner, and we're looking to make some adjustments to that. And we will bring some proposed changes to the ordinance. That will cost us more money, but in the long run, you don't have homeowners trying to repair sewer lines out in our public rights ways with other utilities, out in our streets, that then they have to pay to put those streets back. We feel that it's much more important for us to take some of that work on so that we have it done, and it's done properly and correctly. But again, we will be bringing that to the infrastructure committee for discussion and for potential changes to our ordinances. And last but not least, as I was told to be very, very brief, we have, just so that if anybody has any questions and they need some reading material, we have our website, and I've brought it up before, CleanWaterShreveport.com, all one word. It can, it's also linked to the city webpage under Departments, Clean Water Shreveport. And that website is for all of our capital projects for water and sewer. The engineering department is handling the website. It also contains our public repository for all documents submitted to EPA, as well as detailed information about where we are, what we're doing, all of our projects. It's not, we still have a little more detail that I'd like to have as far as budgets and some other things on the projects, and we're getting there, but there is tons of great information, maps about phase one and where is phase one, maps about phase two, because we're now in phase two, thankfully, because phase two includes most of the areas in the northern part of the city. And we spent the night, last night, out at the wastewater treatment plant off of Russell Road, because we have 40 million gallons a day going through a plant that's designed for seven. And then the power went out, and water has to be pumped in and pumped out, and we almost lost the site. So fixing the holes in that basin is of particular importance for us. But just wanted to let you know that the website's up. We're gonna get some more information out about that, because we're very excited, has a lot of great information. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Just, just two quick ones. The ordinance revision that you talked about, do you have kind of a rough estimate, a timeline of when you want that infrastructure commit? The only reason is, we haven't done one this quarter yet.
We would like to do that sometime in June, if possible.
Do you think you're gonna be ready, or do you want to just let me know and then I'll say it?
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, I would do one. Because otherwise, I would do one in two weeks, but if that isn't enough time, maybe we wait to the end of the year.
We'll get with the mayor and come up with when we would like to have that. But we would like to have it in June so that we can do something as quickly as possible. We've put together some cost estimates and some things and some different ideas.
And then the others, a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but I'm probably naive to think that we're going to get some money back from the EPA on our fine for being ahead of schedule, right?
No, we don't, we don't get any money back, but then we don't get fined. We have a very good relationship with the EPA, Region Six in Dallas. We have met with them multiple times, staff. We bring our case to them, whether we want, whether we're asking for clarification, or some of the language is very subject to interpretation, and of course, we're trying to push our interpretation, which benefits the city. And they have been reasonable, thoughtful, common sense approach. And as long as we lay out our reasoning, they have, they have been happy to accept what we've presented. So we're very, very excited about that. We hope that this whole process will go very smoothly, and we will fix what needed to be fixed a long time ago.
Thank you so much. And just for confirmation's sake, can, the, so when we sign the consent decree is when the initial fine was paid, is that correct?
That's correct. We have 30 days to pay the $650,325 to DEQ and $325 to EPA. That was paid last year.
Right. And, yeah, I just wanted to briefly mention, you know, just during the time that we were discussing this and entered into the consent decree, I believe I was chairing the infrastructure committee at the time, and just in doing research of other cities who've gone through this process, just want to reiterate how incredibly important it is to stay on schedule, and I'm very proud of the pace that you all are doing. It's just imperative, when you look at other communities, there, this is an expensive undertaking, no matter what, but if you don't stick to that schedule, it gets exponentially more expensive. And so to hear that you all are not only on schedule but ahead of schedule and thinking down the line towards those things that can bog it down is very reassuring, and I very much appreciate you all's dedication to this.
Well, we have a great, we have a great team working on it, and I'm just very pleased with the cooperation of engineering, my staff in water and sewer, to try to get everything done that needs to be done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the request button is obviously not working.
It's not, I'm not seeing any, so I'm sorry.
I want to ask, and I should know this, and I'm going to the website, who's the project manager on this, on this consent decree component?
We have, engineering is, takes the lead with the capital portion as far as planning the project, doing the field investigations, or having the consultants that do that type of work, the design and the engineering, and actually managing the capital projects. That's not something we have traditionally done out of the water and sewer department. We are handling the operation and maintenance aspect of multiple requirements in the consent decree. So it's our engineering department, the Assistant City Engineer, Autumn Permaner.
And the totality of this, of this project, and I know we're moving as we go as it relates to designating work, was there a fair share DBE component within this contract?
We have, we have a number of different contracts.
Okay.
We have, there's a contract that is handling, that handled a portion of our negotiations with EPA. They're also doing, or managing, the field investigations, that's fairly specialized work. They have a team that's doing all the modeling and the master planning work. We have another team that's helping us with the actual management of the design and the construction. We're looking at spending approximately 50 to 80 million dollars a year in just capital construction. A fair share has been a portion of all of those contracts, and both of those teams, excuse me, both of those teams have more than met their fair share MBE, DBE requirements of 25% or more, particularly in our program management, I believe that they are closer to 40%. So yes, we are pushing, we are working actively with that, that team is looking at how projects are being put together so that our fair share and our small businesses are able to participate to the maximum extent they can. They've been very creative, and you'll see that kind of on the website in trying to put out there the different types of work. People don't always think about all the parts and pieces that can go, they just think we're putting pipeline in the ground. There are things like, we require the contractors to video the, what they're going to be repairing so that when the homeowner comes back and said, "You cracked my sidewalk," and we show them the video and say, "Your sidewalk was already cracked," or, "No, we cracked it, we'll fix it." Public notifications, hanging door hangers, letting citizens know that we're getting ready to do construction on their street. There's a number of different things that the team is putting together to try to break outside the box, to bring in, you know, our small business community.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate that presentation, and again, thanks so much for staying.
We'll come back in another year.
Diligent.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Barbara.
And that's the end of our announcements and presentations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tyler, we appreciate those. Those were very good, good announcements, and happy to hear the news. At this point in time, we're under the reports section. If anybody has property standards, questions, or concerns, please let us know, we'll see that those are addressed. You should have already received the revenue collection plan and implementation report for the month, the surety bond forfeiture report you've already received. And do we have a master plan committee report today? Perhaps a brief one?
Hello, I'm Marcus Sweeney, the Executive Director of the MPC, and I just wanted to report back to you that this last week was an intensive week of public open houses for the Unified Development Code. We, just as a quick review, we had a meeting on May the 18th at the American Rose Center, one on the 19th of May at Southern University, one on the 20th of May at LSUS campus, and then on the 21st, we have two meetings, one downtown at the Community Foundation and one in the evening at Valencia Park Community Center. With each meeting, our crowds grew larger, and the last, especially the last three meetings, on the 20th and the 21st, were very well attended, getting a lot of comments, a lot of questions. We tried very hard to do a lot of good PR. I know I did about, myself, I did about three TV interviews and about five or six radio interviews to get the message out to folks to come and attend those open houses. And again, we got those questions both from the website as well as for those that attended, both written comments and verbal questions and comments, which we noted for our record to be able to go back and address those issues. At the same time that this is going on, believe it or not, we were also doing presentations during the day. We reached out to the Shreveport Boisier Board Board, the NAACP, Strategic Action Council, developers and civil engineers, the Chambers of Commerce, the Downtown Development Authority, and the Shreveport Regional Arts Council, as well as Realtors and Home Builders Association. So needless to say, there was not any time left unused in this last week trying to reach out to what we call our stakeholder groups that we feel had a definitive interest in the UDC and what it would mean to them. But you might ask the question, what are the next steps? Well, this is just the beginning of the public input process. I want to make that very, very clear, that this was just that, kind of the big opening ceremony or process. This process of getting public input will go throughout the summer. In essence, we will continue to gather additional comments and questions from the public on the UDC website over the next three months, as I mentioned. We will then begin to prepare and post a series of reports addressing those issues that have been identified by the public. Other words, there are a lot of questions and comments that were certain things that kind of came to the surface as the key issues, the key things that might cause people concern or worry. We're going to try to take those apart and actually begin to do some reports that we'll feed back to you, as well as on the website, so people can read those and see how it's being addressed, and what it means, and why we went the direction we did. And if there's a better way to do it, we'll also discuss that as well. I will also, during the course of the summer, be setting up a series of meetings. I call them my one-on-one meetings with various groups that I feel like may be given further attention. And there are some groups that we didn't really get a chance to bring together because of logistics and because of the timing. One of the groups I want to reach out to is the neighborhood associations more in this next few weeks, to be able to sit down with the SCNO group and be able to discuss their concerns as it affects their neighborhoods. That's one of the key areas that we want to address over the next several weeks. I want to be able to clarify and discuss the key issues with those that are most critical, the ones that are our biggest critics of the process and the biggest critics of the UDC. I want to be able to sit down and negotiate with them maybe areas of compromise that we might be able to reach, things that will address their concerns in the same to accomplish the goals for the city and the parish in terms of creating a good ordinance for us. Okay, what else is next? Well, after we go through that process, there'll be another draft of the UDC, because we told everybody at those meetings, this is not in concrete, this is changeable. And so therefore, there'll be adjustments and changes made to key areas, and we can come back and present that so people can review that as well. Another question that came up in the process is, well, I've not seen any maps of where these zoning districts are. Well, that's the next stage also. In August, we plan to debut the actual map, will show the, the updated and changed zoning district names. A lot of the situation, the names have just been changed, in other situations, they actually have been updated. There's a lot of curiosity about that, and we will be presenting that to the public in August, so people can come and look at what those map changes will look like in terms of how it would affect their individual property. So as you can see, there's a lot that we've done, but there's a whole lot more that needs to happen. And before I bring it back to you guys for consideration, we're going to check every one of these boxes. I want everyone, no matter where and what part of the city they're located or in the parish, to have a chance to give us feedback. And I will tell you, just from the overall perspective that I got, it was overall positive, really was. Now, there was some constructive criticism of certain, I guess minutia, little details of this or that, but overall, it was very, very positive. And that really is the kind of feedback we were hoping for. I mean, the work that was put into this by both the city departments and the parish departments, as well as the MPC staff, was not lost. We actually did do a good job of actually looking at all the key factors that would be important to this UDC. So I think the fact that we did get a positive response and an interest, and a growing interest, the more we do this, the more people will give us feedback, and that's the key. So I just, I feel like this is a good overview of what I feel like we've accomplished, and I hope that in the next few months, I'll even have more to talk to you about as we go forward. Any questions?
Seeing none, but I do want to just say and express appreciation, I know several council members attended these, and I think, I know Councilman Fleury in Bradford, I know also that you all had attended, and there may have been others as well. And I know that I attended a couple of sessions, and the two that I attended were on the final day, and I think word had gotten out by then, and there was pretty good attendance at those sessions. And I'll echo what you said, I thought the questions and criticisms were constructive, they were helpful, useful, and exactly the type of input I was hoping that we would see from the public. So, so looking forward to getting more of that, and certainly look forward to the process as it continues to grow.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Fleury, did you have a question? Okay, I'm sorry. And I apologize, if anybody needs to interrupt me, I typically have a speaker key that tells me if somebody's hit it.
Oh, he was going good, I didn't want him to.
It's just not lighting up right now, so I don't know if I, if I don't notice you, don't feel bad about interrupting me. So we appreciate that report, Mr. Sweeney, and next on our agenda, public hearings. We do not have a public hearing scheduled for today, so we can move to adding items to the agenda. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have not, Mr. Thompson.
Great. So at this point, we're at public comments, and we do have a couple of items on the agenda today that have relatively large groups of people here concerning them. So what I'll do is, after public comments, I may call for a motion to suspend the rules so that we can take up some of those items. So we'll allow for public comments first, and on resolution number 94 and ordinance 39, I'll call Lake Hearn, followed by Tim Peters.
I just signed up in case any of the councilmen members had any questions. We've spent a lot of time with, working with William Bradford and Danny Malone as counsel for the city, and as well as Havard Scott as counsel for some neighbors, and we've come up with what we think is a very good plan that the neighbors seem to be happy with. And I just, if anybody has any questions, we're here to try to answer them. Otherwise, I would just thank the city council and the city attorney's office for their hard work and work in this.
Well, thank you all so much. I know this was one that had a great deal of discussion, and it appears that it's come up with a really good resolution, so we appreciate you all's focus on that.
Well, we, again, I want to thank the William Bradford for his hard work, and Danny Malone and Havard, I think he's going to have something to say too.
Well, thank you all so much. We certainly appreciate that. And I know Councilman Jenkins was very involved as well. And Tim Peters is next.
I just wanted, Tim Peters, 541 Slattery.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, could you ask him to state the name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. If you could, just state your name and address.
Tim Peters, 541 Slattery Boulevard, Shreveport 71104. I think you all already saw the plans and everything. Again, if there are any other questions, I think, I think we've hashed them pretty good, but, so, I wanted to thank everybody, especially Councilman Jenkins for kind of spearheading the side of the city, and Mr. Scott for helping out with the homeowners next door, and I think we came up with a plan that was greatly improved over what we originally submitted, so.
Thank you all so much for your dedication to doing that, and certainly appreciate all the time that was spent. Thank you. Havard Scott is next. And if you could, state your name and address.
My name is L. Havard Scott III. I live at 1049 Southfield Road, Shreveport 71106. I got involved in this because a number of my neighbors know that I have a very big interest in Piermont Road. And I have a big interest in Piermont Road because I live in the 1,000 block of Southfield Road, which is the block that Southfield School is on. And between the school and myself, we pretty much have that whole block. I have pretty much the whole south side of the street, a little over three acres and three houses, and the school has the north side of the street. And I have my backyard, which is about 200 feet north of Piermont Road. I have almost 700 feet that runs east and west, so almost everything on Piermont Road other than the corners at Southern and Fairfield, between those streets, backs up to me. I have a very old and mature forest in my yard, and I'm very concerned about trees. And I've had an opportunity to speak a number of times with you all about trees, and it seems like every time I come in front of you all, I'm here about Piermont Road. But when this dispute first took place, some of the neighbors knew of my interest in Southfield Road, and since I've been an attorney for 36 years, they asked me to be part of their team. I was happy to do it. I did, all of my work in this case was pro bono. I probably have over 100 hours of time involved in it, and I think I met with groups of neighbors at least a dozen times, and Oliver Jenkins was present at some of those meetings. And I just wanted to say something about the process. And the process here worked, and it worked because of the city council. Jeff Everson, Mike Corbman, Oliver Jenkins, y'all were the three incumbents last October when this matter came before the council. And had it not been for you all standing up for the neighbors in this zoning dispute, I don't think we would have reached a resolution of this because the neighbors' voices weren't heard in the MPC. Mr. Sweeney was not on board at that time, and I hope, you all know, I've brought this up a number of times to the council, that the process in the MPC is a little strange. And the first time neighbors get an opportunity to say something that they oppose is in a public hearing where a vote's going to take place. And there's really not much of an opportunity to try to sit down and hash this out. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, Lake Hearn, Tim Peters, Danny Malone, William Bradford. Thank you, Lake Hearn, Tim Peters, Danny Malone, William Bradford. My wonderful neighbors, Charlie and Jennifer Kangery, Suzanne Walker, Margaret Rossbottom, Sherry Platt, and Kent and Kai Mason, were all part of this process, as were other neighbors, but it was really the 700 block of Piermont that was primarily involved because it's their neighbors. These are difficult cases and they're difficult cases because when you have the rights of neighbors and the rights of people that want to change zoning ordinances to business and you have people that want to build.
Continue. The time just expired.
Can I go? Oh, okay. Thank you. When you have people that want to build across the street from or next to people's houses, passions run deep. As I told some of the members of this council initially with this matter, there is a resolution and I knew from the very beginning there was a resolution. The problem was getting people to all sit down in the same room and talk about a resolution. And it wasn't until the council sided with the neighbors and that was a very brave thing to do two weeks before an election. So I deeply appreciate that and you're stepping out to support the neighbors is not unnoticed by me and I deeply appreciate it. But it didn't have to go to that level where a lawsuit's filed and then we resolve it. It could have easily been resolved at an earlier stage. And I would ask Mr. Sweeney to try to develop some sort of process with the MPC where when you have these large contested cases, that there is some means for the people to come in and sit down and talk. I've been settling disputes, I'm licensed to practice law in four states. I've been settling disputes for 36 years. There's always a solution to a problem, always. It's just a matter of how bad people want to sit down and talk and try to work it out. Here, we reached a resolution. The neighbors seem to be happy that the store is now going to face Lion Avenue and not Piermont and that there's going to be a buffer zone as there was supposed to be in the beginning. So again, thank you, members of the council, for stepping up with the neighbors and thank you, everybody else I've named, for continuing to be with this process. It took us, you know, this thing started in July of last summer and here it is, almost June. So it took 11 months to resolve this matter and it really didn't need to take that long. But a resolution wouldn't have happened without the council and without at least the three incumbents from last year who carried over to the new council. And the new council members, thank you also. And I think that everyone seems to be pretty happy with this resolution of it.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Kangery is the next comment that I have.
Hello, I'm Charlie Kangery at 703 Piermont Road in Shreveport. And I'm just making a simple thanks to the council, to Oliver for spearheading the effort to get with Havard and the folks from Circle K to kind of come up with a solution that we can all get on board with. So appreciate that. Thank you to the council for being responsive to citizens and our concerns and helping us out through the process and everything else. So it's just a simple thanks and for all of, all that's taken place on behalf of those that are living there. So also Mayor and Brian, thank you all. Look forward to things you all are going to be accomplishing over you all's term in office and look forward to everything, to the exciting things you all got planned. So I'm going to say thanks to you all too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, I'll reserve, don't want to jinx it, so let's vote on it and then I'll reserve my comments for after that. But I'm, well, I'll.
Would you like to make the motion to suspend?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and bring up those two ones in resolution and ones in ordinance, right?
And if we could also, I believe there, there's been a request to take up a third item under that as well.
Third item is BAP 36-14.
Correct.
Second motion.
All right. And we've got a motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Bradford, to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Yeah.
It's working.
It ain't working.
I don't know why it work, nothing's working quite right. Everybody, if you could raise your hand, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Okay. So at this point, do you want to make the motion for?
Ask whichever one, 94. Which one do you prefer?
Resolution, there are two items here. One is resolution 94 and the other is ordinance number 39. If there are no objections, we'll take a resolution 94 first. It modifies the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Case number BAC 60-14, Circle Case Stores Inc. and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
Second. You clear this. We've got a motion from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Did I hear that correctly? And motion passes unanimously.
The next is ordinance number 39. It's a zoning appeal, C-44-14. It amends chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the north side of Piermont Road, 150 feet east of Lion Avenue from B1 Buffer Business District to B2 Neighborhood Business District, except for the 50 most easterly feet, which shall remain B1 Buffer Business District.
Second. And so that's a motion from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by the chair, and motion passes unanimously.
The other item, Mr. Chairman, is BAP 36-14. It's a special exception use. The applicant is Moore and Associates, Inc., owner Trinity Baptist Church of Shreveport, location 3142 Birch Coons Industrial Loop.
Chairman, we've asked.
Now, second that. This is a motion from Councilman Flurry, seconded by the chair, to postpone this item for 30 days. Did you want discussion or?
Yeah, I was just going to say, before they all left, can I have?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, before we move on to the next one, let Oliver make some comments.
No, I mean, they are going to be very brief, but I certainly would like to say, you know, big, big bit of, you know, appreciation to Havard for spearheading really the neighbors' perspective and unifying a group that had very disparate views. That was not an easy task and I do appreciate, you know, the folks at Circle K really taking the time and listening. And I mean, I know it may not have been the best from a numbers perspective many times, but I do appreciate your willingness to continue on and let us find a really amicable solution for all parties. So I do appreciate that. And I do think we should, you know, really give consideration to Havard's, you know, cause premise as far as the ZBA, a forum where we could iron out a lot of this stuff beforehand, I think would benefit all parties and I'm sure everybody involved in this scenario, however it worked out, would agree with that. So, but I do appreciate y'all's role in the city and corporate citizen here in Shreveport. And thank you very much and Havard, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you all. And might I add, I'm excited about a nice looking new sir. Okay. It's going to look, it's going to look great. I think it'll look good. All right. So, and I believe the motion we have on the table is to, the motion that we have in front of us is to postpone. And we had a motion from Councilman Flurry, seconded by the chair, and it's available for discussion. Councilman Jenkins.
Oh, no, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, great. Yeah. Let's vote. All right. And motion passes unanimously.
I believe the motion was for 30 days, right?
Yeah, correct. Okay.
I mean, by the way, nobody with that group wanted a speaker, had who?
No, they have some members here if there was questions, but from what I understood, councilmen and the members of the public and everybody had a chance to discuss already. So I think this was a commonly agreed to action. So if we could, I'll entertain a motion to go back into the regular agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion seconded and all in favor. Motion was made by Councilman Jenkins. Who was the second? Was it Councilman Flurry? And motion passed unanimously. I'm still not sure why none of our electronics are working, but thankfully, here we are at confirmations and appointments. And that makes our first appointment Deputy Director for Information Technology, particularly exciting today. We do have, Mark Santos is here. He is to be, he's up for confirmation for Deputy Director of Information and Technology. We also have several members of Metropolitan Planning Commission, Dale Colvin, Leah de Marto, and Bessie Smith. I don't believe any of them are able to be here today, but they should have made contact or we've heard from them expressing their interest and continuing in their positions. Leah, of course, is also serving as president of, or chairperson for the Metropolitan Planning Commission Board. And then at our work session, we heard from Ms. Waynette Ballengee, who is up for confirmation for the Shreveport Airport Authority. I've got requests to speak from Councilman. Okay, so they're showing up now, but if these may be outdated. Are there any current requests to speak on this? Councilman Bradford?
No.
Okay, got it, okay. So I'm going to clear these out unless there's, or I won't. I will push, I will push the button, I will push the button that is supposed to clear them out and they'll stay there.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve these confirmations.
Okay. And I will second that motion. And so motion from Councilman Corbman, seconded by the chair, all in favor. Looks like we have unanimous approval. So congratulations to everybody and, and we appreciate everybody's willingness to serve and look forward to working with you all. At this point, we are at the consent agenda. There's no items under the consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Thompson, can you continue with items to be adopted?
We have one item, resolution 97. It accepts dedication for utility servitude in Lake Shore Harbor Estates.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. And so we've got motion from Councilman Bradford and seconded by the chair. Motion passes unanimously. And we are on to regular agenda legislation. Mr. Thompson, can you please proceed?
Under resolutions on second reading and final passage, we have one resolution, well, two, but one remaining. Resolution 92 accepts dedication of Riverview Lane and River Run Circle in Riverside Village Phase Two.
And I'd like to move to postpone this to our next meeting.
Second.
Thank you. And that's a motion from the chair, seconded by Councilman Bradford, and motion passes unanimously. And we are under introduction of resolutions now as resolution 94 had already been adopted.
These are not to be adopted prior to June the 9th. Resolution 98 authorizes the execution of a retain agreement with the Greenwall Law Firm LLC. Resolution 99 authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Mayor Smith and Roberts LLP. Resolution 100 authorizes the mayor to make application with the United States Department of Justice for a JAG grant. And those are all of the.
Second motion for introduction.
All right. We've got a motion from Councilman Jenkins. And did I hear the second from Bowman? Great. Councilman Bowman. And I've got Councilman Bradford. And did I see another discussion down this way? Okay.
Chairman, I, and I spoke to the city attorney last week regarding resolution 98. Can I, can I ask the city attorney, Mrs. Madam Mayor, to come forward?
Yes.
And both, representatives from both firms are available today. So if the other, if Myers Smith and Roberts would like to come up front as well, I'd like to.
Afternoon, counsel. How are you?
Afternoon. Are these the two firms or one?
This is Mr. Joey Greenwall from the Greenwall Law Firm. And these are members of Myers Smith and Roberts, Marcus Edwards.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bradford, I'm going to be as candid as I, as I can, okay? And I spoke to you last week regarding a report that was in Fax News regarding the city's outsourcing of attorney legal work. When I, when I was running for political office, for this office actually, I was looking at areas in which we felt that we can cut, we can cut expenses, cut costs. And I, I really believe that these, at the time, the city's attorney's office and our outsourcing of legal work was one of those areas. What do you, what do you, I mean, this is, that was not your responsibility at the time. And the numbers that I'm looking at from the Fax Net report, you say you provided these to them.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Sort of, I mean, they've been flexible, but say 10 years ago, they almost doubled. What's your, what's your, what's your position or response to, to the amount of legal work that we are sending out?
Well, Councilman Bradford, as we discussed, I think it's very important for us to outsource certain legal matters. One of the things that my office has been charged with and that I take very seriously is the management of those files. We are working diligently to resolve matters that are outstanding as well as to provide billing guidelines, which is, which are effective as of May 1st. We're the first office to actually have billing guidelines in place for our contract attorneys. So we take upon our office the responsibility of managing these files. We have a dedicated litigation manager and the appointment of Deputy City Attorney Zelda Tucker. So the management of those files, the management of those processes, the management of that litigation will help decrease the overall cost because part of the retained risk budget does pay for private practice lawyers, their, their attorney's fees as well as settlements and as well as judgments that may, that may come against the city of Shreveport. One of the things that I've done as city attorney is make sure that we, we drill down into these files, which matters can be resolved efficiently, effectively, and in the best interest of the city of Shreveport. So we've taken time to do that. Resolutions that may cost us more at judgment or in trial, we are identifying those and saying, this may be primed for settlement. So we are working hard in our office to make sure that we're efficient and effective in how we're administering the litigation matters as well as the overall operations of the office of the city attorney.
Thank you. In the language in the resolution, execute a retainer. What's, what's, what's the requirement of retaining these gentlemen?
One of the things that we have the privilege of having is a great cadre of lawyers. And so to execute the retainer agreement, the effect of this is to place them as a vendor for the city of Shreveport so that I can call on them and their specialties and their areas of practice whenever I need private practice attorneys to handle matters that are outsourced. It does not cost the city of Shreveport anything other than when work is performed. So we pay them at a council-approved rate of $125 an hour.
Okay, so there's, there's no monetary exchange just for being available?
No, there is not.
And my last question, attorney, is on the, on the, on the document that I, that I printed from Fax Net News, there was 12 firms or, or contract lawyers that was, that was being utilized. Is that, is that pretty much what it is now?
That's fairly accurate. Yes, sir. We have not terminated any contracts. We are expanding the contract relationships with the Greenwall Law Firm and Myers Smith and Roberts. Again, we are focused on getting the most effective and efficient lawyers servicing the needs of the city of Shreveport.
And I have to, and I have to ask my, my consistent question. Tell me diversity in these, in these firms, Mr. Chairman.
That's, that's very, a very important consideration that we make when we are contracting with lawyers and also that we appreciate firms like Myers Smith and Roberts that are larger firms who embrace diversity in their, in their employment workplace. And also, we want to make sure that we're employing small businesses and encouraging smaller firms like Mr. Greenwall, who's a solo practitioner in the practice of law, helping encourage those small businesses to remain in Shreveport and, and work through the city of Shreveport to help build their practice as well.
So you feel comfortable with the diversity, not only in the firms, but also within the, in the pool of contract?
Oh, yes, sir. We have a very diverse pool of contract lawyers. And again, we try to focus on those lawyers who have a practice area in defense work. A lot of times, people may have the assumption that a lawyer is a lawyer is a lawyer, but that's not necessarily the case. If you do not have experience in defense work, then you may not be primed for this job. So we do have a very good diverse field of defense-oriented attorneys.
Not only for, not only in, in, in the diversity of their racial makeup, but I'm also looking at diversity in their ability to address whatever case may come our way.
That's, that's correct. We have a very diverse.
Then that pool, you feel like they could address whatever we hit with.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And certainly, I will just add, you know, we've had the privilege of working with Mr. Greenwald and another capacity as part of a larger group and certainly have had experience with Mr. Edwards and his peers in the past and I think you've made some excellent choices here.
Thank you, sir.
And regards to Mr. Greenwald, tell me, and I don't remember if I saw your resume or not, how long you been in practice, sir?
About 17 years. I graduated from law school in 97, moved back to Shreveport. So I've been in private practice for, gone on 17, 16, 17 years. I've represented the city in various capacities for over 10 years since the Hightower administration. I've handled contract work, property disputes, tax disputes, car wrecks, slip and falls. So if it comes through the door, there's a good chance I'll have experience with it. And what's important about that is we don't have to recreate the wheel. When a case comes in, I can look at it and give you a pretty good estimate on how that case is going to turn out, just based on experience. And those are the things that saves the city money, both on the defense side and the prosecution side.
Good, thank you. And you are from? And you are from Myers, Smith &amp; Roberts?
Yes, Councilman Bradford. My name is Marcus Edwards. From, I'm an associate at the firm of Myers, Smith &amp; Roberts LLP. Address is 1550 Crestwell. Our firm's been around for over 85 years. We have a diverse range of practice areas. There's 14 attorneys at the firm currently. I brought four of them with me today. From left to right, we've got Mr. Patrick Cole, Mr. Daniel Baker, Ms. Deborah Shay Bachman, and Mr. Ben Marshall. And as I said, we've, we've got a long history, a strong reputation in civil defense work, and we have a reputation for efficiency, effectiveness, and the ethical practice of law, and that's what we hope to bring to the city.
Have you ever done business with the city before? This firm?
This, this firm has done some, some special contract work with the city in the past.
In the past?
In the past. I was not there for, for that, no, sir.
But you, were they a vendor? Were they a retainer at the time?
It was a, it was a special appointment, from what I understand.
Special, special case that they dealt with?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Seeing no additional discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? Do we have, motion passes unanimously?
Oh, these are for introduction, right?
Yeah, this is for the introduction of three items, yes. So it's not just for the approval of those two. It's those, those two firms for retainer, and introduction, of course, but also the introduction of the authorizing the mayor to make the application for the JAG grant. Right. Okay, and, and I forgot who made that motion and seconded. Do I need to...
I believe I made the motion.
And my second was Councilman Bowman, I believe?
But I didn't get the vote.
It was unanimous.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to let you know, I asked, I asked the firms to come today, so they probably will not be present at the following meeting. Is that okay?
I believe so. I think we had ample opportunity to ask questions today. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we are under introduction of ordinances. Mr. Thompson, can you please proceed?
Ordinance 40 amends a 2015 grant special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 41 amends a 2015 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 42 is an annexation ordinance tag number 14-06. It enlarges the boundaries of the city. It's a 22.570 acre tract of land located south of Long Lake Estates, unit number 14, located in Section 28 Township 16 North Range 13 West Cattle Parish. Ordinance number 43 is an annexation ordinance tag number 15-01. It enlarges the city of Shreveport. It's a 6.466 acre tract of land located in the southeast corner of Mount Zion Road and Linwood Avenue, Section 1 Township 16 North Range 14 West. Ordinance 44 is also an annexation ordinance tag number 15-02. It's the west 45 feet of the north 300 of Brooks Road Dedication, located in Section 27 Township 17 North Range 15 West Cattle Parish. Ordinance 45 is also an annexation ordinance tag number 15-03. It enlarges the boundaries of the city. It's a two tract, two tracts of land lying adjacent to Southern Trace Development in Sections 29 and 30 Township 16 North Range 13 West Cattle Parish. Ordinance number 46 is a zoning matter C-46-15. It rezones properly located in the northeast corner of Ann Avenue and South Side Drive. It changes the zoning from B2 Neighborhood Business District to R1B Suburban One Family Residence District. Ordinance number 47 is a zoning matter C-47-15. It rezones properly located on the northwest corner of Greenwood Road and Bird Coons Industrial Loop. It changes the zoning from B3E Community Business Extended Use District to I1 Light Industry District with site plan approval. And ordinance 48 is zoning also C-48-15. It rezones properly located on the south side of Levy Street, 225 feet east of Texas Avenue and the north side of Levy Street, 100 feet east of Texas Avenue. It changes zoning from I2 Heavy Industry District to B3 Community District with site plan approval.
Move for introduction.
Second. Motion by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Jenkins for introduction. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance, we're not on ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number 30 amends and reenacts Section 10-171 and 10-172, and enacts Section 10-171.1 and 10-172F of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcoholic beverages. There is one amendment. The amendment decreases the fee for an extended hours permit from $1,500 to $750.
Second. So, to vote on it or?
Vote on it.
Are you moving to the, for the amendment first?
Oh, I forgot, we gotta move to...
So, so is that...
Amendment.
For the amendment. A motion by Councilman Fleury, seconded by Councilman Bradford to amend ordinance number 30 based on amendment number one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? All right, motion passes, or, a motion to amend passes unanimously. Now we have an amended ordinance 30.
Ordinance as amended.
And I'll second that. To, so now we have a motion to adopt ordinance as amended by Councilman Corbin, seconded by the Chair.
Quick discussion. But I gather they jumbled it with the police, and it's all resolved. Okay. I wanted to ask a question.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are at ordinance 33, I believe.
C-37-15, it amends and reenacts Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to book exchange boxes and otherwise provides with respect there to...
And I'll make a motion to remand this to the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
I was gonna ask about the UDC and all the rest of it.
Yes, so if I can get a second on that.
I'll second, all right. Motion by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Jenkins, and as a quick point of discussion, as a result of several meetings with the public regarding the, the proposed legislation that was sent to us from the MPC, several issues and items were highlighted that we'd like to take another look at, so had a follow-up meeting with some MPC staff members, and, and they were very open to continuing to work on that. So we're gonna forward those suggestions from the public to the MPC and ask that they consider those and send us something back that has those considered, so.
Ready to vote? All right, and motion passes unanimously.
Just one comment, and I don't know what our, whatever our inabeyance of this ordinance is, but I'm probably one that, in this case, maybe we could wrap it all up in the UDC and not amend an ordinance in the interim, only to have it be different when it gets to the UDC.
Oh, well, I think that would be the point of doing it, you know, this way, where we can send it back to the MPC so that they can craft it in a way that's cohesive with the other things that are going on, instead of us taking what was sent to us and amending several times. I think that's why we're taking this course of action, instead of, it's all in one voice, and it's gonna be, like I say, cohesive with the rest of the stuff. So, yeah, good point.
And just to let you know, anything that is changed on that will be automatically transferred into the UDC. I've already told Camero's that whatever we're working on now will be verbatim put into the UDC.
Okay, gotcha.
Great, all right, and Mr. Thompson?
Ordinance number 37 amends a 2015 capital improvements budget. It increases appropriations for 12 mile bayou stop station, and it increases appropriation for Senator Seuss.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Jenkins. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance number 38 amends a 2015 capital improvements budget also. It amends Program C. It reduces funding for the citywide street improvements.
Second.
Second.
Motion by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Jenkins, I thought I heard first. And all in favor?
Sorry, second the motion?
Motion passes unanimously, I'm sorry?
Councilman Jenkins?
Jenkins, yes.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items, ordinance and the third amendment was previously adopted.
And is there any tabled legislation to be considered today?
No.
No. There's not, but it's on my script, so I ask. Let's see, and...
All of the appeals were handled on Friday, except for BAP 3614, which was already handled today.
Great, so that brings us to officers, boards, and committees. Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees?
I'd just like to say that, Mr. Chairman, that we had a Public Safety Committee meeting today, and we discussed the police cars and the need that we're gonna have to look at first, places, and also solicitation ordinance, soliciting on the street, and discussion of that, too, how we might have to go for handling discontinued soliciting items in traffic.
Got it.
So we'll be giving you update on that.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any other? Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, on last week, on the 20th, the Small and Emergency Business Task Force Committee met, and it was interesting that since the, since the, that committee, that task force was organized and established, there's only been one meeting. So what we did, we, we trying, we trying to organize it, because it never really been organized. There are several entities that has, that was designated in the resolution to be members of the committee. Those, those entities and their representation have not been developed, and I'm gonna, and some of them not in existence anymore. I'm good with the clerk, and we're going to bring a, an amendment to that resolution that would be more inclusive of existing businesses and entities that we feel would add to the success of it.
Right.
It has several objectives and missions that I embrace and the committee, the ones that were there, embraced, and it was a very good, good meeting. Out of, out of the committee meetings, Chairman, and I spoke with the mayor and administration regarding this, we will be calling a public hearing on the Shreveport Fair Share Program, set for June 16th at 3:00 PM here in the council chambers. And I'm inviting and urging all the council members to be present as we discuss how we can strengthen, move forward with, with the Fair Share Program. It won't be...
What time did you say?
It's 3:00 on the 16th. Again, and we're gonna detail the agenda to where, you know, it would just be input, and there won't be any necessary back and forth with that, because we just, it's a fact finding hearing where we want to get any perceptions on why they, you know, the public feel like it's working or not working, so that we can sort of ascertain that and review it, and if we see where there's some, something that we can do as a council to improve that, we will, we will move forward with that.
Great, well, thank you so much. We appreciate that update, and certainly, and all my time on the council, this is the first update I've heard from the Small and Emerging Business Task Force. So I appreciate, I know I put the right man in charge to get it going, so.
We can continue, we can continue, we have no meetings, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm glad, glad to hear that, Joe Madden, and I appreciate that update. That is, that is welcome news. So now we are at the moment everybody has been waiting for with bated breath. It is Mr. Thompson's clerk's report.
Mr. Chairman, I hesitate to tell you that I don't have a...
That's all that waiting, Mr. Chairman.
I have to keep holding my breath, I have to keep holding my breath. All right, so now we are under the portion of media for additional communication.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I do have a...
Oh, now it's too late.
He was gonna ask for vacation. Oh, no, that was in the email. I'm sorry, I forget that.
We received from the mayor a letter appointing Mr. Jeremy Babers to the Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority. It will be on the agenda for the next meeting, and with this appointment, they will have a quorum and make a meet.
Wonderful, I'm happy to hear that, and good appointment. I think he's a good choice.
Thank you.
Always, Mr. Babers is a younger gentleman who's been a leader in the community, and it's always nice to see diversity in age as well in our appointments, so I'm happy to see that. Not that I'm not young anymore, but a few years ago I was, and so I still, still wanna watch out for the interests of the younger folks. Well, we appreciate that update, and now we are at additional communications. Mayor Tyler, do you have any further communications?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any additional communications?
I have, I have a couple, Mr. Chairman. And I'm gonna be forwarding some requests, Mr. Bryan Crawford.
Yes, sir.
On Saturday, we, we held the Cuprol USA Festival. I mean, it was a good festival, very, very well attended, a lot of activities, a lot of vendors out, a lot of food, but there was a problem, and the problem was that the facility wasn't ready. The restroom was filthy, around the park area was not, was not ready. Some supervisors came out and they tried to enhance, enhance that, that area, and I got pictures I'm gonna show you. And I, and I was wondering, and you have to answer now, what, what is the protocol? If, if we submit timely requests for the use of a facility, and it's timely, in this instance, it's a month, why wasn't that, why wasn't that park ready for assumption of the restroom facilities, the grounds, and this, and that, and so forth? Matter of fact, it has, it is unrelated in a way, but on the same road, David Raines Road, where the, where the festival held two blocks down, there was a, there was raw sewage in the streets, running, running out of the, running out of the hole, and I'm hoping, I had to leave at 3:00, and I called the emergency number, and they supposed to send somebody out. I'm trusting that that was addressed, but the other, the other instances, I'm gonna show you where there, there needs to be some upkeep on the, at David Raines Park. And the other, other issue is, is a continual issue, and that is, you know, the grass, the grass of baked, and the weeds in the lots, you know? I mean, the people in Lakeside are very disturbed. They, matter of fact, somebody called me this morning and said they gonna call one of the news stations to come out and do a story on, on how that area's always been the last to get to a city service, and I, I argued with them that that's not the case. I mean, the rain has really just, you know, just put a, just put a burden on city resources in getting that done. But, you know...
We're gonna get to them.
You'll get to them?
Yes, sir. We're gonna get to them. We're trying to get to everybody, honestly. Every time we have one day of dry weather, it rains the next day. And, you know, this year we've had rain that was just unusual, but we are really, really trying hard. But when you put those big machines out there on property, all you do is tower up the property, and it looks worse. So, but, you know, we're trying to assure everybody that, and we've been cutting throughout this city. We have a lot of property in this city, but we're gonna get to them. And, you know, we've said that over and over again. Just give us a chance, and we just pray that God relieves us of the rain, because we're not in charge of that. And the floods right now, it's gonna take us two or three days for it to dry out, but, you know, we're trying.
And I, and I conveyed that message, Mayor, because you've told me that at least three times, because I mentioned it to you, and, but again, you know, the agony and the frustration of some residents, just, that explanation don't satisfy them. But, you know, nevertheless, I told them whatever they felt they could do, they expedited to do it, but at the same time, it can't, it can't drive the, the grounds to get it done, so. But those items, Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to mention, because, you know, I just would not want anybody else to at least come into an environment like I experienced on Saturday at David Raines.
Chair, and that, Councilman Jenkins, did I see you?
Yes, I got, I got, well, one question, maybe it's William Bradford that can answer this. Is there anything that precludes a resident from, I'll say, mowing a median?
They do it all the time.
Right? I mean.
I trimmed the branches on the trees in my median the other day.
Okay, so before I say what I'm gonna say, I don't wanna get somebody in trouble, right? That's obviously the reason why I'm asked.
Let's not ask the question.
Okay. Well, let me say, there are some residents, uh, certain sections of the city that take ownership in public areas in front of their house.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to re, I mean, listen, I would love that the city could take care of every blade of grass that was owned by the city on an opportune moment. But the reality is, we just don't have the resources to do it and there isn't time in the short periods of dry weather recently to even do it if we had unlimited resources. So I am one of those, I go back to the individual responsibility issue. I mean, to encourage people to come up with some type of, I'll call it, public-private partnership, where they get out there, there's folks trying to work on stuff in the Shreve Island neighborhood to take care of some flower beds out there. I know Shelley's been in touch, or some of their folks have been, about some issues out there. There are several neighborhoods that now trim the median themselves and they don't feel that the city isn't responsive to them. They recognize that the city can't get to everything all the time.
Thanks, sir.
And some type of thing to encourage and recognize, um, communities that do that as part of the beautification project. I'm a hundred percent behind and I, I think we need to, to support those people that do it when we give them that opportunity and offer it as an option for them to do it themselves if they're so inclined. So I say that just globally. And on another issue that I don't want to discuss outside of, in a public forum, but I do wanna discuss with department heads after this, if I could have an impromptu meeting with, uh, Dorothy or somebody else from Property Standards, Malcolm Statlander, if he's around, and Mr. Sweeney, when we conclude the meeting about some property standards, I'm not sure zoning issues. If everybody's still here, just for fifteen minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Corbin. I believe was next or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just something I thought about over the weekend. You're traveling south on Clyde Fant, um, as you get to Mollum Street, right at the corner of Riverview Hall. The trees out in front of Riverview, or Riverview Theater, I guess, need to have some branches trimmed because you can't see the red light until you're right on them. Take care of it.
And, uh, Councilman Bowman?
I just, uh, wanted to invite everybody, that Bill Cockro Community Center, um, on Pine Road is having a, uh, Community Awards, uh, event that they're having this Thursday. And, um, there, it'll be the, make sure I say it right, it'll be, they're giving away the Joyce Bowman Award, uh, the J.D. Hudson Junior Award, uh, the Community Business Award and the Neighborhood Association Award. So, uh, I would ask that all who can to attend, please.
What's the time on that?
It is at ten AM.
All right. Thank you so much.
I'm only going if you're getting an award then. Gotta go, Joe.
Bring an award with him and give it to you.
Bring an award with me.
Mr. Chairman, let me, since, uh, Councilman Corbin mentioned it, I was gonna use my regular means of going through the clerk to, to make this request, but it, it seems like a, a, really an urgent request, Mr. Crawford, is that a gentleman called me this morning and told me that, uh, on the corner of Boot Drive and North Market, that's North Highland Neighborhood, that, uh, that, uh, there's, there's some weeds or limbs or something that's obstructing the view from, coming from the north, I mean, from the south, and that residents are almost getting hit because they can't see around that before they pull out into the busy North, North Market, uh, uh, street. So if you can have somebody look at that.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Jeff. It said, it said eleven AM. I'm sorry.
Eleven AM.
Seven AM.
The event at Bill Cockro on Thursday.
And our speaker will be the great Miss Mayor, Ollie Tyler.
I've heard of her.
The great mayor is the speaker.
We'll be there speaking.
Oh, my goodness.
Since we are under general communications, I will, um, also just, uh, mention and note for the public and just as an expression of, I, I know that y'all have plans to do this when we have an upcoming press conference, but I just wanna remind everybody about how to participate in the bulk collection program. There's a number you can call, you can go through the city's website. I've noticed a lot of, shall we say, spring cleaning, um, and, uh, limbs that are being placed by the curbs incorrectly and, um, uh, you know, it's not just a, um, it's a, it's a responsibility incumbent on us as neighbors to, to put our waste out in a way that doesn't impose on our neighbors and, uh, our surrounding property owners. And, uh, you know, as property owners, we wanna maintain the value in our property. And so putting a wall of limbs, uh, at the curb with no binding and no, uh, not cutting it up and not putting it in, in, in the designated, um, uh, delivery methods, um, is, uh, is pretty inconsiderate of those around you. So we just wanna remind everybody to, to, you know, keep, keep aware of that and, uh, and dispose of, I know we have a lot of challenges with downed trees and things like that right now. There are, uh, there are, uh, very specified ways for how to get rid of those and I'll be heading home to cut one up myself. So, um, I understand what we all have to go through, but, um, but, uh, let's keep it clean. Thank you very much. And at this point, we're on to public comments. We do have two public comments requests. The first, and I apologize, uh, the, I believe it's Joseph Jackson. Yes, Mr. Jackson, uh, if you'd like to come up, um, and we'll, uh, have three minutes to hear from you. Handwriting is very nice looking, but I couldn't quite read it, but I'm glad I got it close.
Thank you for the compliment. Good evening to the council, Mayor Tyler and all. My name is Joseph Jackson. I live at one eight one six Looney Streets, Shreveport, and my issues today are very old. The street repair in my neighborhood has been neglected. I've stood on the, on the side and watched the street during the summer. It pure mounted at my feet. They came out and patched it. It left like a speed breaker. Finally, they come back and fixed it. Underneath our streets, we told them back when I was a child and they first did it, that there are underground springs that run across it. When it came out a few years ago and replaced some of the concrete blocks, I reminded them again. They did nothing about it. Today, all this rain is running from under those cracks in the street. I would appreciate it if we could get more streetlights. I've asked for years, years and years. I'm always told something, but nobody ever does anything. I've been there for seventy-one years and I'm seventy-one years old now. It has always flooded in my neighborhood. God have always been good to us not to let it come in the house. It'll come up to the edge of the porch about an inch. You could take your toe and put it in the water. But we never flooded, but the damage underneath our homes is done. The ditches there have never been repaired since they have been placed there. I've been quiet for the city. And when the ditches come from different directions and try to go into one, uh, direction, then you got a collision and it backs up and it floods in our area. It comes right on up to our porch. We've dealt with this for seventy-one years. Nobody's never done anything to comfort us. In twenty, April twenty thirteen, oh, by the way, the, last week, I took pictures of all the water running out from my house. I got it on video and still pictures. Twenty thirteen, April, underneath my home, the sewage runs directly center, all the houses, north and west, I mean, north and south. And for years, we've had this odor under my home, sewage, and we've dealt with it. There have been humongous holes in the ground under the house. The city came out a number of times and brought dirt, twelve-minute men, five-gallon buckets, and that's what they did, filled it up. But they never solved the problem. So finally, technology came up. They run the camera down, they find out what it is. The city come out and repair the sewage they bring from under my house down the side in the alley.
Second. Go first, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I didn't know. And they did that work. I'm happy with it. But this was in twenty thirteen, April. This is twenty fifteen. They have not come back yet and completed that work and kept that word to me. I've talked to a number of people, I'm not bringing their names because that's not what I do. I come here. When I want something done, I go to the top. They tell me, we're going to put a liner in this to block the sewage off or whatever it is. Why is it taking you two years? And I'm constantly calling the same people and they're telling me the same story over and over. So here I am today. I hope I'm at the top. Because I don't lack confusion, I want peace, and I've been very patient with the city for these years. I'm not happy.
Mr. Jackson, I think it sounds like you, uh, has a well-organized list, this, list of concerns and we appreciate you for putting those in such a way. And I, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the administration.
Yes, we do.
But I think they would be happy to, um, to meet with you after the meeting and, and get some details with, from you so they can follow up.
I got patience.
Wonderful.
We're glad to meet with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, we certainly appreciate that. And thank you for being a resident of, uh, the Allendale area for all seventy-one years. That is, uh, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you. And our final request for, uh, public comment today comes from Mr. Sammy Mears. And, uh, I hear that, um, we need to ask Sammy to lighten up some. Is that, uh, is that, you, you were very serious last?
Light up.
You were very serious last.
Because I looked like a zombie two weeks ago?
Yes, yes, I had a comment from, uh, somebody to, uh, tell Sammy to lighten up a bit.
I'll get to that shortly. Anyway, Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one, sitting area Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I hope everyone did have a happy Memorial Day because I sure did. I got a friend of mine who came over. He took me to the King's Highway Brookscher so I could turn from changeover to cash to save up for MDA, which comes in September. So I'm looking forward to that. Now, as far as what happened about two weeks ago, at the Highland Wendy's Restaurant, me and some other people were trying to enjoy a very good lunch and it seems like we all were doing okay, but somebody came in with one of their, who was screaming and crying somewhere down the way while we were all trying to just have a good meal, and it, it wouldn't stop. Somebody went to the manager and asked for them to do something. Nothing was done about this. They just didn't do anything at all. And I finally asked these two men if they knew what was going on. They didn't have an answer, but one of them just told me he went to talk to somebody about it. I really wish that what this lady would have done was maybe get a babysitter and he could have at least maybe stayed at home and there would not have been any misconceptions with this going on, but this happened and if that's gonna continue, I might as well just take my meal to another restaurant where I don't have to put up with that. Now, as far as what you asked about the zombie, yes, when I got home, I was watching on KPX JCW twenty-one at nine o'clock and I saw myself sitting in my usual chair, just looking and looking like this. And when I found, when I found myself doing that for almost one minute, I laughed really hard because I actually thought that I looked like a zombie and forgot to check the answering machine to see if I had any calls. I go to the machine, check the machine. One of my good friends called and said, Sammy, this is Don. I wanna know something. I was watching you on KTBS at six o'clock. Why do you look like a zombie? You should lighten up. Well, I even laughed even harder because I kept just seeing how I looked like that and so even I got to laughing at myself because I could see that there was a funny sense to it. And I know I'm always observing, I'm always serious when I come to the meetings, excuse me, but I guess I could lighten up. I did get a good laugh today when you were push-button happy and you said, I'll clear it. Beep, 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 beep. No, I won't. So thank you for lighting me up. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you so much. Those are all the public comments that we have for today. If there's no objection, we'll reconvene, uh, well, I guess we are still in the regular council session, um, and we rise and report and this meeting is adjourned. All right.
So there's no passing of the mark.
Correct.